Welcome, everybody, to the Planning Board meeting for the Village of Rhinebeck for April 2021. First item on the business is all business continuing Lydia and Michael's Slavy 25 Melbury Street. Site plan area variances demolition, partial definition demolition historic structure. We're going to continue our discussion. See Lydia's there, but. Microphone, ah, there she is. Good evening.
One, two, three, four. Only have four of you. Are we, are we?
James Davidson is coming in now. Give him a minute to connect. Jim, good evening. Thank you for attending. I guess he can hear us. So I guess, Lydia, what, what's new with your project?
So the only thing that's new is we got our, here's Michael, hello. Is we got our historic demolition permit in. So with your permission, we would like to have you schedule a public hearing on that. Or however that works. I don't know how that works. And then the other thing is that we have a sketch from the engineer, but the Duchess County Board of Health is coming out on Thursday. So we're, you know, we're underway with that. And then what else do we have that's new? That's, I think that's it.
Well, so we got a letter from someone.
Oh, you should have had.
Justin Neuer's, who's a newest code enforcement officer.
Yes.
And he's declared that if I, the, because there's a roof on the side. That means it needs 10 feet. So you need a, you do need a variance for the. The carport on the left side, and then of course five feet from the back. We don't, but we don't have, we were going to check with the engineer. And the Board of Health to verify that the septic is so far back. You know, that you need to have it five feet from the property line, not 10, but we don't have that yet.
Not yet. The Health Department's coming on Thursday.
Yeah, I have, I have like a sketch. Do you even want to see a sketch or is it not really worth it to you?
Well, do we have any, do we have Mark from Minsky draw something up?
Yeah, he's got a sketch.
The Health Department hasn't come or verified it, so it's.
All right. So I guess, I guess we should then, if everybody agrees, hold off on the recommendation for the, to the ZBA for, for the two variances until we clarify. I guess the carport on the left side is clarified. But to, you know, on our site tour, there's a huge backyard there. And the question is, you know, is the variance is five feet? Is that, you know, does the septic system, everything else really require? And you can't give up to five feet and forget it to code. So I guess we'd like to see my Mark from Minsky's drawing and the Health Department to really verify that it has to be that far back because we have to make a positive or recommendation of both variances.
Right. So just so you know with that is we're getting a little crunched back there, even though there is a fair amount of space. Because the septic has to be 35 feet from the pool, not 20, the leach field has to be 35 feet from the pool, from the pool, not 25 feet. And it can't have any sort of anything on top of it. So why they're going to have to make. We're definitely going to have to make the turnaround area smaller. We might have to make the garage smaller or we might be pushing it even closer to the property line. Or a combination of all of it. We're not fully sure yet.
So we'll hold off on the, on talking about the recommendation to the CBA until the beginning of May.
Yeah.
Which we still leave time for a public hearing, the third week of May.
Yeah.
At the ZBA and wait for the Board of Health and the engineers report.
So does the public hearing for the historic demolition, does that happen under your authority or under the?
Yeah.
Authority? Okay.
Yeah. Yeah. The ZBA holds a public hearing on the variances. We hold a public hearing and demolition permit.
And then just, just to make sure that I know what I'm talking about, in terms of the, the area. The area requirements of, you know, no more than 30%, is that just the footprint of all of the structures? Or is it the total square footage of the structures? I couldn't find anything in the zoning lot that spoke to that.
I believe.
I would imagine it's footprint, but.
I believe, I believe it's, I don't think it, second floor counts. I believe it's footprint. I'm not.
Okay.
I remember I have to look at the colors. John, you're looking that up?
Well, I'm trying to find it. Yeah.
It doesn't include something like the pool or is the pool separate from that? Yeah.
This is where we miss having a zoning enforcement officer at the meeting.
Well, I would assume that the zoning enforcement officer looked at that when he made the ruling about the required variances.
Um, he did. You know. I can also go back to him about it.
A pretty big lot. I don't.
Yeah, I mean, I, I, I think it's fine, even if it does include the pool, but I just wanted to sort of. Like dotting all of my eyes and crossing off, there's so many moving pieces with this particular. I just want to make sure nothing is falling through the cracks.
I guess we have to look at the code. Because there's things like patios. Asshole and driveways don't count. Patios, I'm not sure if it's a covered patio or, you know, whether, whether the carport counts or not because it's covered. You know, I, I.
Right.
We need to, unless we can find this tonight, we would need the zoning enforcement officer. But it's a huge lot and I don't, I was thinking it'd be a problem, but we.
There's, there's two things that I see apply and there might be more, but these are the two that I found. Maximum lot coverage, that's only includes buildings is 30%.
Yeah.
So 30% of the total lot can be covered by buildings. And I don't think the pool would count towards that is my, my guess, but that's, doesn't clarify that.
No, it's covered. Does that count?
It probably does because it, we need a variance for it. So it's like, I would imagine that the same rule that applies to needing the variance for it probably, probably applies to this. And, and John, you would imagine that that's probably the footprint of these buildings, not the total square footage of the buildings, right?
I'm looking here. Okay. So the lot coverage can be 30% of the total lot and it includes all structures. And under structure, swimming pools are included. So the swimming pool does count as part of the maximum 30% lot coverage. That's how I read it.
Okay.
And I'm not the final say. This zoning enforcement officer has to make the final say. That's how I read it.
Yeah.
And then there's another provision in. On page 28 of the code that says the combined footprint of all accessory buildings shall not exceed 75% of the principal structure.
Right. That we're definitely fine with.
Okay.
But, but it is interesting because it identifies sort of footprint of the accessory structures versus it doesn't.
You would assume it's the footprint of the building as well because it doesn't say otherwise, but you're right. It's not exactly clear on that point.
Right. Okay. I'll, I'll go back to Justin about this.
So we'll get a clarification from Justin.
Yes. He's very nice. He's, um, he's been, he's been, he's been on the job for approximately 32 seconds. He's churned out more decisions than, you know, we've had in a month. So it's great. All right. I'll ask him about it.
All right. So we need to get a, we have the variance letter. We'll need a lot coverage level with, with the carport, the pool, you know, patio in the back.
Not the patio.
Huh?
The pool, but not the patio.
Yeah, I think, I know the patio doesn't count, but I believe the pool, you gotta, you gotta read every detail of the code to come off the calculation. But it's a huge lot. It shouldn't, it shouldn't be a problem, but let's get a ruling. So we're, you know.
That's sort of the question. It is a problem if we're counting total square footage. It's not a problem if we're counting footprint. So. Okay. All right. Cool.
It's footprint.
Okay.
It says no in the definitions.
Okay. Perfect. Great. All right. Then we don't have a problem there. Um. So, but I'll make sure that Justin weighs in on it. So then otherwise, ideally, we can sort of have enough information for you to send some sort of recommendation to the ZBA in time for the ZBA's May hearing.
They can make that recommendation on the beginning of first week of May and then the third week of May, they keep following us. So that's enough time for Ryan to get notices out after our recommendation for the variances.
Okay. And then in terms of your timing on the, on, on the, on the demolition permit. How does that work? Do you all make a decision and then you hold a hearing or you make it, you make a decision sort of yes or no, or you just hold the hearing first?
Did, did Ryan send you the demolition form in the code?
He did. Yeah. I, I, and I submitted an application. It's not, it's not like on the piece of paper that Ryan sent me, but. It answers all of the questions that was on the piece of paper that Ryan sent me. I also, I followed chapter 64. And what it wanted in, in the application as well.
So I guess I can jump in here for the procedural aspect. The chair and the board members have to feel comfortable tonight that based on what you, as the applicant Lydia submitted this morning sufficiently satisfied section 4A. That is the basis of making the decision tonight on whether to schedule the public hearing for May 4th or not.
And if you want until May 4th to look at it and then you can schedule it for the third week in May, I mean, like it's really up to you. We're not taking down that part of the house for quite some time. So.
So the last paragraph. Says, we believe that we've met. Two and four, to us that the historic character of the remaining portion of the building will remain intact. And for us that removal of demolition will not result significant avoidable diminution of the historic character of the property. So, you know. And the cover you showed, the 1890 Burley map showing that it's there, you know, the addition.
Yeah.
Must have been part of the original building.
It, it looks like, I mean, in that drawing and who knows, you know, but in the drawing, it looks like it had a peaked roof. Which it no longer has, if it ever did.
Found that the 1890 bird's eye is pretty accurate from what I've seen in comparison to other buildings in the past. So it's possible that somewhere along the line, you know, maybe they had a fire up in the attic or something and they put a flat roof on and lowered the ceiling down. Because it doesn't look characteristic to have a flat roof addition on the back.
Right.
On a house that's designed the way that house is. So my guess, and I don't know, I'm not the historian here. But my guess is it might've had a peaked roof and somewhere along the line lost it. And that's why you have that sort of very odd ceiling configuration on the second floor in the back.
Got it.
And that's at least some argument that the origin, the part that you want to remove is not original. In a certain degree, and so therefore you're maintaining the historic part of the house, but the accessory wing in the back has been compromised already. I don't know how anybody else feels about that, but that, that's sort of what I got when I looked at it.
Yeah. Nobody would build a house like that a hundred some odd years ago. There was no rubber, rubber membranes or things that had to put in a fat, flat roof. It'd be quite dangerous to try to build a flat roof with, with the technology they had. And as part of the book, the form from 1979 says it was built around 1880. The way you do it, we, we have very few old maps, like the Burley map from 1890, not before it was 1876. So when you do this kind of stuff, you say, okay, it's on the 1890 map. It's not on the 1876 map. Let's cut the baby in half and it's around 1880 is the best guess. We didn't have Google or anything around at the time. So we look back and if it's on the earliest map, then it's before like 1850. And it's really old.
We do have Sanborn maps going back.
I looked on the Sanborn maps from 1885 and we don't have that part of Melbury Street. There's always three of them.
Yeah.
I don't have all, five of them. Brian Plummer wrote the book on the Beakman Arms, was doing research on the village, went down to New York Historical Society. Scanned all the Berlin maps from 1885 till about 1925, like six different sets. He scanned them and gave, gave us a copy. So I was looking this morning at it and there's three pages of 1885 and my house is there, but it's not, it's only three houses on my section of Mulberry and it doesn't have anything past Livingston. And there's now that page. The next one is 1895, which of course it's on.
But does it say the rare edition is two and a half or two stories? Does it say anything like that?
Yeah. Um, I don't have. I don't have the thing in front of me. I didn't print it out. Ryan, Lydia sent it out. I don't. Ryan, do you have that or?
Rich.
Want me to bring it up? The 1979 Historic Register. Domination.
Oh, I can pull that up.
On our website.
All right, ahead.
All right. Hold on. Let me find it.
Right. If, oh, it's hard to read.
I can zoom in.
All right. So if we look at it, it says. Integrity of the double door entrance was replaced with a single door and a single side skylight, sidelight. And I know Lydia wants to change that. And then when you go down to the second page. It shows that. House is noted for its molded cornice and bracketed. Freeze with returns, twin arched windows with triple hove surround, two by two of a windows with heavy molded cornices above. And lowered shutters, three side bay and bracketed porch. And it says on the 1890 map, so it was about, and not on the 18, at the bottom you can see not on the 1876 Grey's Atlas map. So we assume somewhere between us two, when she picked Marilyn Hatch picked 1880. This is a very good example of a bracketed style house. It's intact and very good condition. I know when we talked about. Lydia, you know, knocking down part of the back, trying to save some of that.
Yeah.
And put it back on the new edition because that, that was marked as an important feature of the house.
Yep.
On the brackets. So I think Michael D was talking about that, that could that be saved? I think Lydia said she would try to save that.
Absolutely. And we would actually put it. You know, we're going to have probably more than is needed, but we were going to prioritize the front facing portion of the carport. So that everything that you can see from the street had the original details of the house. That was, that was the goal there.
Can you let me share a screen?
Yes, I need to stop showing a screen. So hold on.
Go ahead, John.
So there's the building, I think.
Oh, you have a missing page.
Oh, wow.
Well, this is 1905.
Oh, five. Yeah. Okay. I have that.
So it shows a two story addition, but they don't know whether it has a peaked roof or not.
These were insurance maps and, and they, like every five or 10 years, the village hired them to draw these maps. And if you said, oh, my house burned down, they said, let's check and make sure that was a house there.
Right.
Pay the insurance claim. So insurance company did this survey.
That's cool.
And that was.
What's interesting here is it doesn't have, it has the side porch on the back section, but it doesn't have the back porch on the back section. So that's interesting.
Yeah.
I could look for it on the. I think the next one was the 1890 map of the 18. Have to look it up. It's take time now, but.
Right.
Yeah, but this map, I, I didn't have this page on the stuff that Brian Plum scanned for 1885, unfortunately. So this, this addition has been there since the beginning practically. I think we can assume that. And I agree with John Clark that it would not have had a flat roof. This thing was altered. And maybe that took away some of the ceiling height when they put the flat roof on it.
Right. Yeah. Well, I mean.
You have a history.
Yeah.
It's, you know, records are very sparse, even in the planning board office, until you get to 60s and 70s, 1960s and 70s. Before we have some more people apply for permits or get things like that. You can have some proof that some work was done. So how does the board, Lydia's seven page document justifying. Why this could be demolished? Do you feel that that's a strong enough argument for us to go forward with a public hearing in a couple of weeks? Anybody? Michael, Jeff? James?
I, I would rather wait till at least we've gotten the Board of Health and the septic and take everything, you know, as a total package. But I think they've made a really good argument for demolishing that back addition. On my mind, I think the, the plans they've submitted just make it much more symmetrical and historic looking. I, I think it's a really good plan. But I don't, I, I don't think. I want to rush it either. I'd really like to know the Health Department and, and, you know, the septic system and look at it as a total package. If I was, if I was to, you know, vote to demolishing it, I would want the condition that a lot of the architectural pieces would be saved and notated and photographed and, and put back or something quite similar, not, not these cheap Home Depot things that sometimes. I mean, I think you could see it on the last. That porch addition there, there was this curly cue stuff, you know, that just looks like it was bought out of a catalog somewhere and slapped on to, you know, to look old, but you know. Those are my feelings at this point. Jeff?
Yeah, I, I think I agree with Michael. The. That, you know, that this was a great job and looking at the documentation that Lydia and Michael put together. Especially when you look at the photos there, there's one photo there, detail of the newer substandard edition that shows the southeast elevation and, and. The older new addition kind of juts out from the house and then the newer new addition juts out further than that. And it really doesn't look very nice from the, from the front, from the front of the house. I. I'm in, I'm inclined not to object to the removal of, of those sections. I agree with Michael that. Actual details could, could be saved and placed back on instead of, you know, plastic ones or whatever kind of faux details. I'm, I'm good with that.
James?
Yeah, I, I agree. I, I'd sort of assumed, maybe I'm wrong, that Lydia was planning to do that, save, save the elements and. And use them, but I, I agree. And I, I think the design is, is. You know, follows good conservation as far as I can tell.
And so if I could make a suggestion, then at the first meeting in the week of May, we can go over this, look at the final plans for the septic and the whole thing, get the, get the ruling on the lot coverage, get everything done. And then we can. Uh, make a, a, a vote that we're happy and we'd like to schedule the public hearing for the third Tuesday in May. And then we can make a vote on a recommendation, the two recommendations to the ZBA. By the third Thursday in May. And then, you know, it can, uh, get resolved. You know, we still have to approve the site plan and that only can be done after the ZBA approves the. Variance.
Okay.
And the septic plan, right?
You have to have the septic plan.
Correct.
And verify. And that septic plan would. Help. You're even talking that it might be so small, you have to make the building smaller. So if it's that critical, that's important that we know the exact variance you need. And that's a powerful justification to go for us to recommend it and for the ZBA to approve it. If it's a tight fit back there because of the size of the leach field, septic tank and so on in relation to the pool. So. That seems like a good schedule.
Right. My suggestion, and you know, I seem to be in the minority here, but I, my suggestion is to go ahead with the public hearing. So that we get public input and then we can make more informed decisions at the second month, second. You know, I, I don't see why the variances. Have to coincide with the demolition permit because the demolition permit doesn't involve the, the, you know, the eventual site plan or the coverage of the house or any of that sort of thing. It's really just a question as to whether we're going to allow the back end of this building to be taken down. So my suggestion is to go ahead and get public input so that we can make those decisions with more public. Information by the third week. But.
But we still can't do site plan approval the third week of May.
I know.
And approve something that's illegal. So we have to wait till the CBA. So I don't know, it's six of one, half a dozen. How, how do you feel about trying to be democratic here? How do you feel about John Clark's comment? You guys still would like to wait to have the whole package or?
So the, yeah, I, I get it. So, so the, the issue of demolition is independent of any site plan approval. Because in fact. There may be changes to the design of the garage depending on the outcome of the septic design, et cetera.
Right.
But I, I think that makes sense, actually.
The demolition permit is to demolish, it has no effect on the variances. It has no effect on the septic and leach field. That's a separate issue from the demolition of the back part of the house. So. I don't know.
Just, so, but, but, but question then. So if, if we issue, if, and I like also John's idea of getting, getting the public input as soon, sooner than later. But if we issue, if, if it goes ahead and a demolition permit is issued and they can. Demolish the back of the house and some glitch occurs that would prevent the Slavies from. Doing the renovations that they hoped they could do. Where does that leave you? You just, you're, you're not going to, I guess you're not going to demolish the back of the house until you have site plan approval for your new plan.
But they, they can't do anything until they have site plan approval. We cannot approve an illegal plan. So we have to wait till after the ZBA makes a ruling, which is a third Thursday. We'll meet again the first week of June. So that's the layout of site plan, ZBA. As far as the demolition permit, whether we have the public hearing, the first Tuesday or the public hearing, the third Tuesday for the demolition permit. That's up to us.
But here's my, here's my question. When we, when we built our house here in the village, we got a demolition permit, but it was to demolish the whole structure. Basically remove the structure from the property. This is basically a partial demolition. So if you demolish the back of that house and just leave a gaping open hole in the back of the house. What are you going to do? I mean, you're not going to do that until.
We're not going to do that.
Oh, no. They can't get a building permit until they have a site plan.
Right, right. But my, my question was, was just to educate myself, is there any connection between, despite the fact that, that, that a demolition permit may be. Issued, would it be contingent upon the approval of a site plan that would remediate the opening of the house, you know, the damage caused? You know, the damage caused.
They, they can't do the demolition, even if they have a permit until they have a site plan approval. Your house, it was different. That house, the church house, they, they neglected it and that's why we had, uh, Mr. Fenton Institute of Policy where we inspect these houses, cite people and say, you have to maintain the house. You have to, if it's a bing, you have to close the windows. You can't leave the windows open for five years and then say, oh, it's all the foundations falling down. And that's the church had neglected it and we had a contentious debate here on demolition permit. But could it be saved? They brought an engineer in. It said it would cost more financial hardship, which is one of the categories of demolition permit. It would cost more to save and retrofit the house than it would to knock it down and build a new house. And we had, uh, it was, none of these demolition permits have ever been five to nothing. They had the same thing with the police station. It was three to two because some of us feel somebody the other way that you could, you can save anything.
Well, given, so, so given that answer, I think John's, uh, suggestion is sensible that, um, we don't have to wait. And, and I also agree, it's, it's best, it's best to get public input as early in any process as possible. So we don't get too far down the road and then get surprised. So I, I'm in favor of John's.
The other thing I think is important is that if we have the public hearing on the first meeting in May, we don't have to make any action. We hear the public, we consider what they say and we act at the next meeting. And then, you know, I, I always worry about when you have a public meeting and you make a decision there immediately thereafter. It makes it look like you sort of already had the, you know, the, the decision made and this way you have the public hearing. You hear what half people say. If some new information comes out, you have a couple of weeks to think about it. And then you make your decision on the second meeting for both the ZBA and the demo permit.
Yeah, I mean, it doesn't, public hearing being the first to the third Tuesday doesn't matter, except maybe, you know, John is probably correct that, uh, it'd give us more input and it might actually give Lydia input to, uh, get some public comments and think about, well, maybe that's a good idea too. So that's why we have a public hearing.
I'm just going to jump in here as the person who has to do the legwork to make all this happen. It does matter because you need to sufficiently notify Lydia's neighbors within the lawful amount of time. So it does matter. I'm going to jump back into my shadow here.
Do you have enough time to notify the neighbors in time for a meeting on May fourth?
I've counted out the days, um, yes, um, but right now I've counted on my fingers and we have three members to two. So. Is anyone coming over to the dark side?
I can be sprayed by John's argument.
I, I can too. Okay. Brian, let's schedule, send out the notices. We'll have the public and we don't have to. Like, I agree, John, we should, since it doesn't affect the process in any way, except to give us some input ideas to both us and, and, and the slaveys. We can, uh, have the public hearing and then vote, um, on demolition permit the following two weeks later, right before the, uh, public hearing. We can make a ZBA recommendation. Um, we have to make a ZBA recommendation.
Well, you don't have to, Chair. You don't have to.
On May fourth.
I, the other thing is you don't have to, public hearing open and have a meeting on the first and third, if there's any substantial indication that the public is concerned.
So at this junction, I just need a motion. I don't know, John Clark, do you want to make that motion?
I'll move that we schedule a public hearing for the demolition permit on the first meeting in May.
Okay, all those in favor, raise your hand. Aye. Okay, all right. So we'll have the public. Ryan, get the notices out.
Now, uh, turning back to the applicant Lydia, uh, between, uh, now and probably April thirtieth, you need to complete all the criteria in section four B. For the public hearing. So, um, you're going to need input from Mark. Gominski as your engineer. And basically you will be making your position on the various, um, bullet points within section four B on why, um, this partial demolition has to move forward based on your proposal and you'll be making your case.
The applicant should be prepared to provide the following information included but not limited to the following eleven things?
Yes.
That's C, right? Section C?
Uh, it's, it's section four, no, uh, B, letter B and then, um, C lists. There's a financial statement, there's an engineering report, there's, there's many things that need to be completed. And, uh, basically you're making your case and position to the planning board of your, of your proposal and then they have to digest everything that you propose and, and, and your case.
Okay, absolutely. Um, and also I, I do know that I asked our neighbors to weigh in for good or for ill with all of you. And so I believe that they've sent, you should have gotten at least, I think, four emails.
Four, yes, we're at four. Um, I felt it was a little early to share that with the board. Um, as we approach May fourth, I, I, I will share their comments with the board.
Thank you, Brian. I appreciate that.
You are welcome. So, uh, you have your homework to do and, uh, your neighbors will get notified.
One question, I, I don't remember this. Do you have a survey so that you know exactly where your property lines are?
Yeah, we have, we, we have the survey. We have not yet had it staked, but, um, like we have, you know, within, we have a fresh survey and we have like literally within inches, an idea of where everything is.
Okay, so your engineer has something official to work from?
You have to give the, the zoning enforcement officer the actual square footage of the property. On the service so he'll know, okay, it's this many thousands of square feet and this structure, that structure, the pool, blah, blah, not the patio. Yes, the, the carport, you know, yes, the pool, whatever. Um, and then we ended up and make the determination on, on the lot coverage.
All right, great.
Thank you.
Thank you all.
The second thing, if Brian could bring us up, we have the, uh, upside.
Upstate Down applicant sign proposal. Um, I believe there is a representative from Timely Signs.
Present, that is me.
Present, okay. Um, so, um, I mean, I'm going to ask, is your name Gabriella? You're using your wife's computer, okay.
Nice enough to let me use it.
Just hold on, I need to, um, hold on. So if you can state your name in full.
Andrew Scandariato, and I can spell that for you.
I've got it on the screen.
Oh, yep, that's, that'll work.
Okay, so you're all set. You can go, you can proceed with the presentation.
Okay, uh, I'm here on behalf of John and the Lee's Berry of Upstate Down. They're looking to put up a hanging sign out front of their building on forty-one East Market Street in Rhinebeck. It would be a double-sided, uh, hanging sign perpendicular to the building, uh, eighteen inches wide, twenty-four, sorry, eighteen inches high, twenty-four inches wide with a thirty-inch hanging bracket and to the bottom of the sign, I believe is a hundred and two inches high. And the material is a half-inch thick exterior grade PVC.
I don't even remember. There have been, the liquor store has been here forever. So has Brett alone. That store between the two has changed hands a million times. Same size as the previous sign that we have to, uh, does it all fit in the calculations, Ryan?
They have predetermined signs there. I believe the landlord has, um, pre-structured or, uh, pre-approved, um, amount of size signage they're allowed to use. And I believe the former tenant only had, um, signage in the window. I don't believe they had a hanging sign, but don't quote me on that. Um, I, I believe it was called Face. Um, that was there. I mean, I don't wear makeup, so it's not something that I would.
I think Bob had a deli before that. The deli might have had a sign. Deli, there was a lot of different places in there.
I don't ever recall the, uh, a deli. I, I just remember it always being some sort of retail, so.
So is this, this is the, what, the amount of square footages that's allocated by the owner of the building?
Yes, I believe it's seven. Seven square feet and they're proposing something that is three, three square feet.
And there's no lighting?
No lighting on it.
And nothing on the door?
Nope. They're eventually maybe going to do hours depending on how their business goes.
Hours don't count.
Okay. Yeah, nothing, nothing on the doors then.
Yeah, okay. All right, this is some kind of a real estate office.
So this would be considered a professional office?
Can anybody from the board have any questions about Upstate Down?
If anyone needs a clarification on the type of office, uh, as the chair mentioned, it is real estate. Um, but I do have a write-up. Uh, they will be boutique real estate, so however you want to process that. You know, it's your oyster, so.
This is Rhinebeck. We only have boutique, I mean boutique real estate offices in Rhinebeck. All right, so does anybody have any problems with the sign?
I don't.
It's eight and a half feet up from the sidewalk on a new, new metal bracket. And there's no lighting.
No, not for our sign. There is a, looks like a lighting fixture above one of their windows, but no down or up lighting or internal lighting for the sign itself.
Can, can we get some clar-, do you know what that light is for?
I can find out, but I'm assuming that's just there from the previous tenant, whether it was sidewalk light or shining down into their storefront. Again, I don't know what was there before them. If it was a salon, maybe they had products in the window they were trying to shine.
I know there, I know there is a door there that leads to the apartments upstairs on the second floor. So I don't know if that's a security light for that door. But there are, that is access to the apartments upstairs on the second floor. There's a doorway between this, this retail store and the liquor store that leads to the apartments upstairs.
It looks like those lights are downlit and as long as they're not glaring on the sidewalk, I guess we're okay. The sign looks okay to me. It looks fine. As long as it's over seven feet off the sidewalk, I think we're set.
I have a motion to approve the sign for, uh, Upstate Down.
I, I'll move.
James, do you have a second?
I'll second that.
Michael seconds it. Uh, we can, uh, I guess a roll call vote since we're voting on it. Michael Gee. James Davidson. John Clark. Jeff Christensen. And David Miller, aye. All right, tell them good luck.
And Andrew, if you can just inform them to take sort of a picture of it, sort of this, this is kind of the best picture. Once it is up on the bracket and they can email it to me, or maybe you guys can from Timely Signs. Once it is up on the, on the bracket, so I can have it for, um, attached to the application and for the.
Absolutely.
Really appreciated.
Yeah, that's not a problem at all.
Awesome. Andrew, will you have a good night?
You too. Thank you very much, everybody. I appreciate it. Enjoy your evening.
Very welcome.
Thank you.
The last thing on the agenda is the minutes of February second and March sixteenth. I think we, everybody's commented on them. Ryan's made some changes and, uh, I, I think they look good now. Is everybody happy with them?
Yes.
I have one comment on that. There was a couple of.
Which one? March second? I thought it was March second, or February second, I mean.
Let's see, I'm looking at. No, I'm looking at March sixteenth.
Pull up your microphone, Jeff. It's sliding down again.
Looking at March sixteen, I'm sorry, not March.
February, let's go one at a time. To have a motion to approve February second's minutes.
I'll make that motion.
Do you have a second? John Clark seconds it. All's in favor, say aye. Okay, they're approved. Now, March sixteenth. Jeff had a comment?
Yeah, I had, actually made a few requests that don't seem to have made it in here. The one I'm more concerned about is on the, uh, Monica Sequoia Nero. Looks like on page three that begins with Ms. Nero was present, Mr. Miller started off, et cetera, et cetera. And then, Mr. Miller referenced the picture window is not appropriate or compliant choice to the property. And then it says Ms. Nero contested this observation. And that is not true that there is another on her street that she included in her photos to the clerk. And it is not true as there is another. So grammatically, this sounds like, Mr. Miller said it's really not compliant and Ms. Nero's contested the observation. And it's not true because there's another one. It almost sounds like she's right. And she's not. What I had asked to be added to the minutes was Mr. Miller's response to that statement. Which was that the, the photo that she used was of a divided light window, which was not in any way equivalent to the window that she was proposing or she has. And that it was an older one and probably grandfathered anyway, but this statement makes it sound like it's agreeable and it's not true and it is not true as there is another window on her street. So it's confusing.
Okay, I, I, Jeff, I'm going to jump in here. Um, we can sort of play around with the grammar of it. Uh, what you have to be careful is what is present in the recording. You cannot alter. What is in, is in the minute. So if, if she is offering an, an opinion, an opinion of sort of what the planning board's position is, you really can't, can, you know, you really can't alter that.
Okay, then what I would like to have is what Chairman Miller said in the meeting and is in the recording. Which I was paraphrasing, but if we have to, if we have to put the exact quote that Mr. Miller responded to, please put the exact quote in the minutes.
Why don't we hold off on the March sixteen minutes so we can get either Ryan or our, our minute taker to listen to that section again and verify that's correct. Cause this needs to be correct because, you know, we're, we're going, this is, this case is going to continue. I doubt if she's going to do anything about it. I think we have verified that this violation, violation is to issued by Mr. Fenton way back is still beyond the building and I wanted found in the title search. So the new owner, when it's sold, is aware that there's a window violation and they are protected by having to have an escrow for, I don't know, what we escrow is the same triple windows as above. So it would look above and below the same, something like that. And it'd be like a, I know, a thousand or fifteen hundred dollar escrow or some payment made at the closing. So the new owner wouldn't be stuck with the violation. And the new owner could change it.
So, Mr. Chairman, the only thing I can share with you is that it has been referred to Village Council. And that is under review by Village Council. So at this point, um, I don't, it is in Village Council's hands. And where, what direction it goes from there, I. and where, what direction it goes from there, I, I, I can't offer, I'm not a lawyer, and I'm not gonna make myself out.
No, no, I'm not, I'm not saying that, but what Jeff is saying is that we need to make sure for the future, because this is gonna linger, that the minutes, which are official record, and we're going down to the county, I guess, at some point, or published on our website, reflect what actually was said, so can you please ask?
I can ask Chrissy to go over that section.
That sentence is correct, as, as, I don't recall it, but as Jeff recalls it, that sounds absolutely correct, because it may come back to haunt us, and then we could approve these minutes at the next meeting, okay? Thank you for catching that, Jeff. Alright.
Sure.
Anybody else have any other comments, questions about activities in the village?
The Father Brogan Center closed on Thursday. And that's all I know. Father told somebody at one of the masses that the new owners want to do something residential in the oldest part of the existing building, and that's all he said.
We know nothing about nothing. If they wanna come back to, you know, state what they wanna do, we've had half a dozen different proposals that don't mean anything. It's sold now, it becomes more of a reality, they have to come, you know, anything like a partial demolition permit, which we're doing with Lydia, they have to come back for anything they wanna do, so we wait.
Right.
They bought the building, and I assume they'll do something with it, so we'll see what happens at that point, now that it's actually sold, and it's become reality. So we'll wait to hear from Ryan, that he's got something from the new owner. Okay, we can, whatever Father Crawford says, is, he's no longer the owner of the building.
He's no longer the owner, right?
We have to leave him to a new owner, nation company, I hear. Okay? Anything, Michael, thank you for your morning constitutions. Villages that always feel like our volunteer police force here.
Yeah, we, you know, I'd like to know what's going on at 57 Chestnut, because it's in the historic district, and it's because we don't have, you know, zoning and a building inspector always around, and they're just thinking they can do something where there's no sheriffs in town, then, you know.
Wait, what's going on?
57 Chestnut Street, it's in the historic district, and the siding was removed down to the original. The siding that was removed is listed on the 1978 historic, as asbestos, so I have no problem with asbestos siding being removed, but I believe there's state laws that say how it's supposed to be done, and, you know.
Ryan, did they file a permit or anything?
No.
Alright, what is this, 57 Livingston?
57 Chestnut.
Alright, thanks.
And they're digging the hole on Mulberry Street for the new house, I hope it looks nicer than the black house on Platt Avenue. Thinking of that, Lydia, the board moving on the historic district, everybody's got a letter from the state, Michael's got a letter from, from Washington DC, it's all, his house is all in the federal historic register now. Is the village going to take action?
So by show of hands, who from the planning board wants to help me with this?
Those look like some heavy hands and heavy arms.
I, yes, I'm gonna start the process. Honestly, when I was done on this stuff, but I would be deeply grateful for somebody's help from the planning board. I just don't have the time to sort of quarterback the entire process myself, but yes, I do wanna bring it to the attention of the village. I'd like to start holding some public information sessions, and then, you know, let's get moving on this.
Well, you have Jennifer Betsworth's map, which I guess is just, which the state and the federal government has gone along with, we just have to have the village approve that new map, which shows Oak and Platt, and so on, added to, and Mulberry added to the district, so.
But I don't wanna do that without having, without, without hand-delivering notifications of public hearings to all of the property owners that are in the expanded district, so that I don't have to go through another walk ever again in this village, where people yell at me and say that they weren't informed about what was going on.
Michael, they all got letters, right, from the state?
Yep.
The parks department in Washington DC, you're now on the historic register, right?
Yep, and a lot of them who don't fully understand what it means are, have a lot of questions, and are frustrated with their local officials for not having brought them into the conversation before the state and the federal government got involved.
I, I feel your pain, Lydia. I feel your pain.
Yeah, so we, so we need to have some public hearings about this, I am sure it will all be seamless, but I wanna make sure that we have public, the opportunity for the public to engage. And so, you know, Ryan and I are gonna have to get together on that, and if anybody from this group of five wants to help, I would be delighted for the, with the help. So let me know, I won't put you on the spot right now, but let me know, and I'll probably actually get going on that in May.
Alright. Somebody think about it, I'll think about it.
Also ask the planning board, I mean, also, also ask the zoning board, if there's anyone there who wants to help. So there's a few things that are beginning to crop up on, on my radar, that, you know, additional help from, from volunteers in the village would be helpful with, and I know that you all are very busy, and this is a very busy board to be on. But there's, there's this question, there's also Vanessa Bertozzi and I are gonna be looking at our zoning laws to see if they can be enhanced at all as they relate to environmental considerations. And while we have the door open on the zoning laws, I have some things that I would like to think about as well. So I was actually thinking of asking, you know, folks who have been on the planning board or the ZBA, and who are no longer, or who are not, you know, active members, to potentially help with these sort of questions as well. Because it would just be nice to have folks experience and input on this before it even comes to a public hearing, so there's, there's a few things going on with zoning and planning, in addition, obviously, to the unsteady staffing of the office. Unsteady, not because of Ryan, but because of everything else. Thank God Ryan has not been unsteady. And thank you, Ryan, for not being unsteady.
You're welcome.
So, yeah, there's a few things that are beginning to crop up.
The last code changes were made by Brandt, and Tim Decker, and John Clark, that was just recently, just a few years ago, but things are always changing.
Yeah, and then there's also, you know, we, we got some advice that actually, looking at our comprehensive plan as like one big, huge thing that takes a bunch of years, is perhaps not the best way to do it, and if we wanna, you know, sort of update it, we can, you know, think about it a little bit at a time, like Vanessa's looking at it in terms of environmental stuff, and then maybe we can look at it, so just, and so I'm gonna be suggesting to the, to the village board that we create a comprehensive plan, just sort of standing committee in the village, that, you know, takes these things one piece at a time, so there's gonna be a lot of opportunities for people who are interested in zoning and planning to be engaging on sort of multiple fronts.
That would be good, because the last plan was decades ago, Mike Fraser was the chair of the committee, and that was like in the 80s or something, so.
It was, it was 1993, and it was, it was a wonderful plan, but it, it's just in desperate need of, you know, modernization. So, you know, there's, there's all sorts of things going on.
I wrote that plan when I worked for the county.
I guess John was involved.
Thank you, John.
Was your beard white then, John?
No, it wasn't.
Mike Fraser's beard was black, all of our beards were black in the 80s and 90s. Hair that went out about six inches from my head, John had Afro.
I didn't. I, that's one of the reasons I moved to Rhinebeck, is I worked on that plan and sort of fell in love with the village.
Oh, no way, that's great, that's awesome, so yeah, so I'm looking for, and I'm, and I'm also, we've only gotten one applicant for the planning board, and I need more than one, so I, I'm looking for people to engage all over the place, so if you trip across anyone who says, hey, I'd be interested in helping the village, and you know, how come that real estate office went into a storefront that would be great for retail or restaurant? What can we do about that?
We hear those questions all the time, and we're just here to serve.
Yeah, please point them in my direction and say, hey, I've got someone who wants to listen to you, you know, get excited about how to make things better, so. Yeah. Always looking for names, always.
Alright, well, we hope you have success, although we appreciate James Davidson pinch hitting for quite a while now.
Yeah, thank you, James, for both last year and this, I.
Been fun getting back together, you know, I hope I'm not here indefinitely, but.
I know, I was trying to draft you the other day, and you said, no, you've been there, done that.
Well.
So I appreciate.
We'll figure it out.
Alright, well, good luck, everybody, should be warmer the next time we meet. Oh, Lydia, there's nothing, there's still nothing, I saw Elijah put a tent up, he wants some tables, Tabitha put a tent, but what about closing Market Street? Nothing's happening on that?
Like closing the whole street?
Oh, for, yeah, two lanes again, like last summer.
Oh, the department, the barricades?
Yeah.
So the, I, I filed the permit with the Department of Transportation a week and a half ago. And I got a call from them yesterday, and I called them back, and we've been playing telephone tag, so hopefully the barriers will go in, if they approve us. The barriers will go in in time for the May 1st weekend.
Okay, good.
Yeah. But I need to hear from them, and then I need to coordinate barriers, and so there's gonna, even once we get approved, there's gonna be probably a two or a three-day delay in terms of getting everything into place. But it'll be very similar to last year, except what we proposed is very similar to last year, except that the south side of East Market Street will only have barricades from Pete's to Samuel's, and then in front of Abba's, and then from sort of halfway down Winter Sun, Summer Moon, to the corner, and so we won't be blocking off all of that parking between Lupi T Bistro and Pete's, the same way we did last year.
Well, Abba has just put our tables in the CBS gravel pit. Was it better to ask forgiveness than whatever?
Well, they tried to ask for permission, and CBS, you know, as you all know, is notoriously.
Can't reach them.
Yeah, difficult to reach, so.
Let them call her and say, get your tables off of my land, in the meantime, she's expanded.
Well, Rhinebeck responds is also working, is trying to work with CBS to get, to sort of open up that pocket park a little bit, to be more useful, frankly, and we are wishing them all of the luck, because if they can work with CBS where we haven't been able to, great.
It's just an ugly waste of space, it was, I think it was designed to keep it away from view by backing it in, and not having it right on the street, but they should have done something more attractive.
That was a building that was already there.
Oh, yeah, I know, but that day, but the supermarket, but, but they wanted, they wanted it sort of hidden away, I don't know. It's like they hid away Hannerford, it's, you know, half a mile up the hill, you can't even, you don't even know it's up there, but they wanna try to hide CBS as well.
So, you know, we'll figure it out.
Alright, you know, good luck, everybody, and everybody stay safe, and we'll see you, we need a motion to adjourn.
I'll make that motion.
Do we have a second? Alls in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
We will, May 4th. Thank you, guys.